Called a meeting to order. Tonight's our privilege to have with us a lot of the students from Albemarle Middle School. It's been Youth and Government Day, and I'm gonna go around the table in just a minute and ask all of them to introduce themselves and tell us a little bit about what they did today.
Stand up. Come stand up, Mr. Mayor.
My name is Ricky Rodriguez, and it's a way I learned about being a city council member.
I'm Alea Little, and I learned about being a council.
I'm Owen Austin, and we learned about how to run a city council meeting.
My name is Marques Charles, and we learned about projects and stuff that are due in the city.
I'm a Cuban, and I learned about zoning and how to improve the city of Albemarle.
My name is Jabari Brooks. I learned how to be a firefighter.
I'm Jomon Peatney, and today I learned about all the things that mayor has to take on.
I'm America Magana, and today I learned about water treatment and electricity.
I'm Lucas Megson, and I learned about what the police department's doing.
I'm Ali Curry, and I learned how to be a city council member.
I'm Alea Little, and I learned how to be a city council member.
I'm Najee Strayhorn, and I learned how to be a city council member.
I'm Kaya Smith, and I learned how to be a city council member.
Mr. Mayor, did you discuss any particular topic at your meeting this morning?
We learned about natural gas, and we also learned about abandoned home project. We also talked about approval of minutes, and we talked about motions, first and second motion, and then we also talked about if you don't vote, then your votes are automatically considered a yes vote.
Anyone else want to talk about what you did this morning? Did you discuss any topic that you had a vote on?
We discussed a topic about apartments in Albemarle, and would it be a good idea to build them there because of the extension of 2427?
Did you vote on that topic?
Yes, sir.
And how did your vote go?
They decided that it would not be a good idea because of the extension and all the noise on 2427.
Anyone else want to speak? Well, I think I saw your principal out here. Let's get her to come up and speak.
See, I sent you the best of the best to do all the talking tonight, and that is what we have here. I was just about to post on Facebook that the city of Albemarle is in great hands tonight because of all them here. Thank you all for having them.
Thank you. And did your guidance counselor come tonight? Okay, thank you. Anyone else have anything to say? Here and now, I'm gonna move on to our next topic. We have a retirement tonight, one that we did not look forward to. He's been with us many years, and we value what he has done for us and really hate to lose him. Albert, would you come on up?
I don't have to say that, though.
If Albert says his family, the city of Albemarle will be coming.
Come on up. Everybody's welcome. It's been my privilege to work with Albert all these years. I consider him a friend and a very great officer. Albert has had the chance over the years for many promotions, and he has chosen to not seek those promotions and to stay in the schools where he has loved working all these years. Tonight, I want to read a resolution. In appreciation, this certificate of appreciation is presented to Albert S. Branch, who on February 1st, 2018, retired from employment with the city of Albemarle after 28.50 years of loyal and faithful service. On behalf of the citizens of Albemarle, the mayor and the city council have authorized this certificate and extend best wishes for a well-earned rest and a long and happy life.
Thank you, thank you, chief and mayor, city council representatives, my young, future city council representatives. Good to see you all up there. Proud of you. The community itself that I serve, Chief Bowen, all my cohorts, everybody, thank you. It was a fun ride. I did give up a lot of promotions. I knew I was where I was supposed to be in the schools. I'm still there. Somebody asked me, "Do I miss it?" I said, "I haven't had a chance to. I'm still there." I'm still coaching, and we're in the state playoffs, so I had to run home, change real quick, and get here just to do this. So, I don't get a chance to miss it. I'm gonna still be working, working with my kids. I love them. That's what I enjoy doing. Thank you.
Chief Bowen and Police Department have a couple more presentations.
About two days after Officer Branch retired and left our employment, we received a package in the mail, and I opened it up, and it was a certificate, and I'll read it to you. It's the State of North Carolina Department of Justice. The North Carolina Justice Academy issues this certificate thereby certifying that Albert Scott Branch has completed the prescribed specialized hours in the School Resource Officer Certificate Program. This was issued on the 15th of December in 2017. Albert was the 199th officer in the state of North Carolina to complete the program, and I hate to tell the justice academy, but Officer Branch was a certified school resource officer for us years and years and years ago, and he's done a great job, and we will greatly miss him. And we also would like to present Officer Branch with his duty weapon that he was carrying when he retired, and it's in the box.
It's in the box.
We won't take it out. We will miss him. He is, as Mayor Michael said, he's been a great officer. I've always respected him. He looked up to him in the schools as all the kids have and other officers too, and he's been a great role model to a lot of people and will continue to be. So, we wish him well in his retirement.
Thank you very much, and thank you to all the family for coming up tonight. Thank you. February 6 adjourned session, and February 8 adjourned session minutes. Motion by Councilmember Aldridge, second by Councilmember Townsend, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. The next is a public hearing pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 158, 7.1 for economic development. Mark Donham, would you come up and introduce this?
Mayor, council, Michael Ferris, I've got some really exciting news which will be good for the city of Albemarle and Stanley County. We're requesting the council to provide a grant to attract an industry here. We've been working with the county as well as the state in putting this project together. They're proposing to add or invest 2.56 million in building and equipment and to create 50 jobs for this area.
This is a public hearing. Anyone who cares to speak for or against, please come forward.
Move the public hearing to be closed.
Motion by Councilmember Hall to close the public hearing, second by Councilmember Dry, further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Council, I believe it would be inappropriate then that we move to approve the incentive package that Mr. Donham has put together for this project. Motion by Councilmember Dry. Second by Councilmember Aldridge, further discussion.
Do we want to talk about what's in it?
The project that Mr. Donham has put together with the approval of the council is for a five-year grant period. The company will add approximately $63,000 in tax revenues. We will then reimburse them $47,000 over that five-year period and give us a net of a little over $15,000. Those are all the proceeds we will see. We have a grant incentive program where we will reimburse a certain percent of the taxes, and that is 75% of the taxes, and then at the end of the five years, that will expire.
And the county is also...
The county has a lika grant that they're working on tonight. Further discussion. All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Have no agenda adjustments unless something comes up as I add on at the end. Unannounced delegations, I have three. Jeff Crisco, 16457A Silver Road, Oakboro, please come forward.
Good evening, mayor, council members. A lot of faces, and I recognize those that don't. My name is Jeff Crisco, and I will be seeking election for the sheriff's race in May. A little about myself, I've been in law enforcement now 26 years. Eight of that years was spent overseas in the diplomatic security. On top of that, though, I've been in law enforcement my entire life. My dad was an FBI agent. I grew up in Buncombe County, which is up in Asheville. I started my career here in Albemarle in 1992. I worked everything from the road to criminal investigations and narcotics, and to this day narcotics has pretty much been a passion for me. I did not realize the eight years that I was gone, just how bad the narcotics problem has become here, primarily the opioid epidemic. The heroin is astonishing. I looked at some stats before I came in tonight.
Jeff, will you come back to the mic, please, for folks that are watching this, that will be watching it?
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. I wanted to make sure I had some current statistics, but from January 2017 to September of 2017, and this is the latest, and I know these numbers are higher now, the overdoses in Stanley County were a total of 243. That ranged everything from the medication to the opioid to heroin, and then they had the benzodiazepine, which is Valium. So, it encompasses everything. My plan for the sheriff's office is, when I was with the Albemarle Police Department, we had an interagency drug unit where the sheriff's office and the police department worked jointly. And unfortunately, right now, the sheriff's office is getting away from that. They don't want to work together. To me, the drug problem is so severe, not just the sheriff's office and the police department need to work together, but they need to work with all the municipalities. We've got to take a hold of this and make our communities safer. I'm just like y'all. I have my kids and my grandchildren live in this county, and my overall goal is to make it safer. Thank y'all very much.
Thank you. Shaun Gull in Essence Price, 227 Leonard Avenue.
Good evening, mayor, city council. Actually, I didn't really know what I was coming up here for in the beginning, but it was... I should hear me out before y'all start, because it's not what it seems. This is my daughter's address, and I'm the spokesman for her, I guess you could say. But she acquired during the month of December, she had a $300 something dollar light bill. All right, in January, it turned up into a $1,200 light bill, and I knew at that point in time, I think I looked it up, it was either between 10 and 15 days of freezing weather or something around that range. And coming up here, I didn't know really why I was coming up here until I come up here with her, but what she gave me, her bill right there, as far as with the light bill, she has paid on that because she knows she can't pay it all at one time. And being that she has three kids and she's in Section 8 home, you know, there's one requirement for you to keep the light bill. So, when it came up here, I'm thinking she was telling me to ask, well, can they take some of this off or is just extremely too, which I would say it is, but you know, that ain't what she came with. She came with to see if y'all could help her with the plan to pay it. The bill ain't due, all the bill ain't due yet, but she's now to $800, and I don't have no glasses, $829 and some change from being from $1,238 to 98 cents. So, she's trying to make progress in paying that off so she can have some light bills for her kids and all, and that's what we're sitting at. She was telling me about she had some friends that was in the same situation with the bills, and they couldn't pay it, and they lost their Section 8, which could happen, or you know, lose their apartment or this and that, and that's where she's not wanting to be for her and the kids and all. So, that's what we're here for actually, now, to see if there's any way that y'all could help her as far as with a payment plan to... Although the bill isn't due yet, and she's got to pay some more on the bill when the bill, I guess what, the final notice, whichever date that is, I really don't know. The 25th. And I was asking, well, what could you pay by then, because that number will go down some, you know, and to make it, if could get y'all to do something, it can make the payments look different than if it was up to where it is now. So, and she didn't know, and I told her, well, just see what y'all say if y'all would just say something to help her, but that's the reason I'm here.
So, her bill's not due till the 25th?
Yes, yes, and she's done brought it down from the 12, the 12 and some change to 8, 820. I cannot see.
How many extensions have you had?
Three, and I have used them all.
Council has agreed to give one more extension this year due to the high light bills in January, so you can go to the utilities to ask for another extension to help you in having time to pay that.
Even if I don't use the three today?
Yes, we've agreed to grant another one due to the high bills in January, so you can do that. I know of no payment plan, Ms. Ferris.
I was gonna add that because the weather was so cold and so many people had extremely high bills, even with our rates not even changing over the last three years and being down from where they were a couple of years ago, you know, people, because of the weather was so extreme, I don't remember cold weather like this. We're setting up payment plans and working with people the best we can. You know, we can't let that go on for an extended period of time, but when people are trying to work with us, we're trying to work with them as well, because this is just such an extreme situation of the way the weather was, particularly in early January. So, we are making those arrangements where we can. So, if she will come in and speak to utility customer service, we can provide that additional extension and try to work out a payment plan that works for both sides.
Can you come in this utility?
Yes.
Just for clarification, she said that she's used all three of her...
And you don't even have four yet.
I think our policy is four, and we granted...
And you have an unusually extra high light bill. I would encourage you to evaluate what's going on in the house.
Well, I had my meters checked. They came out and checked my meters, and they made sure that wasn't nothing running over, and everything was, came back normal.
She don't have a huge house.
And I've been there for three years. This is the highest it ever happened.
I would encourage you to maybe make sure that you're... Are you on a heat pump or what?
No, I'm central.
But it's a heat pump. I would encourage you to make sure that the pump is working right and it's not working solely on the emergency heat, because that would make the price go up in a hurry. I would encourage you to have that checked.
Is it one of our requirements through the Section 8 program that the houses be energy efficient?
I would have to refer that to Cedric.
Is there anybody, any group that does energy audits, take a look at the house and see as far as insulation?
Council, Mr. Mayor, it's not a requirement that the homes be energy efficient, but we do encourage the landlords that, if you know they can, make efforts to do anything to help with those situations to do it, and for the most part, they try to do it, but like I say, we do have a lot of older units that are on our program, and we have been doing some education things with our landlords as far as energy efficiency and things like that, but it's not a requirement that they have to be, use energy efficient products and stuff inside the home.
Thank you. Mr. Leonis. Tell us what we can do in an audit to evaluate this.
Through the electricity cities program, we do do audits, but they're primarily geared towards commercial and institutional. They're not really geared for residential, but we can look and see about trying to do, see if they can do something. It's kind of hard with the residential because there's so many various factors versus, you know, some of the... They're looking at the overall energy usage, whereas in a residential, primarily 60 to 70% of your bills is going to be based on your heating and air conditioning is where the bulk of that is, and they really don't look at those systems quite in that level of detail. Hope that makes sense.
Would you talk with Ms. Price?
Oh, yes, absolutely.
See if there's anything we can do to help her.
Yeah, just give us a call in the morning, stop by, and we'll be glad to sit down and work out a payment plan with you, because we've run across this. You're not the only one in the boat, so we can get that taken care of.
We appreciate it.
Thank you very much.
Push, come to show, we always can borrow the money from Mr. Townsend.
But, mayor, can we reiterate that one more time about the fifth one, and that we did have 10... You know, we did have 10 or 12 days there that... How many days was there, Mike, that we had exceptionally below freezing temperatures?
What we look at is what they call the degree heating days, and that's for every degree below, I think it's 38, that, you know, and the colder it gets. So, it kind of gives it some... Not so much how many days it was freezing, but how long of a period was it below freezing or below 38 degrees or 42, I can't remember which. But when you look at December and January of 17 and 18 and go back to 16 and 17 and look at the same time period, we were about 55% colder than we were a year ago at this time. So, that explains a lot of some of the large heating bills that people have had, but it was a very extreme temperature differential.
I do want to stress, too, that the city utility rates have not gone up in electric. They were the same for the last two years, and three years ago, we had a decrease. So, we have not had an increase. Any increase they're seeing in their bill is actually due to usage.
Yes, sir. Yeah, if you looked at just our utility, our kilowatt hours consumed through on our bill, the wholesale bill, we had about a 40% increase over this time last year as well. So, it was a cold, and it showed up in everybody's bill.
Thank you. And I want to stress again that the council did offer another extension if you're having problems with your bills, even if you've already used your four extensions. We have one more that you can get now to give you some help in getting those utility bills paid. Next unannounced delegation, Antonio Garcia Hernandez, 1510 Liberty Avenue.
How you doing, city council? Well, it's basically, I just came here to describe why my power bill was so high. Basically, I were answering for me, so it's pretty much...
Do you have any further questions? I know you've just listened to all that.
Honestly, I just want to know, like, I'm pretty young my age and whatnot. My father passed away three years. My mom's in Mexico, so it's like I honestly have nobody to go to, to like, how do you say, for like extra money or something like that. And I'm employed at Five Point down at the restaurant, a cook wise, and if I can bring my pastas, I say my pastas every two weeks, about $450, so we're making about $900 every month, and my rent's already $550, so with the power bill being up too wise. But you already said I can get an extension, so I can work something out with that. I just want to know why was this so spiked up? That's all I wanted to know.
It's definitely usage due to cold weather, so just come by and see utilities.
Okay, sir. That's all I can make of it. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor? Yes, sir. We're talking about the cold weather, I mean, hot weather. Same thing can happen in the summer, so I would encourage you to speak to your landlord about looking at the house and getting it better insulated. That's their responsibility to do, and as a renter, you have a full right to ask that question, because you can experience it just as greatly in the summertime as you can in the wintertime. So, I would encourage you, please, to go ask. I wish we could do something and go out and insulate everybody's home so this wouldn't be a situation that we're having to deal with. It's been a strain on everyone, and please go talk to your landlord. Thank you. Number five, your monthly departmental reports are in your agenda. Anyone have any questions? Hearing none, we'll move on to new business. Number six, consider the request of Piedmont Natural Gas for gas main extensions.
Have you taken the oath?
So, this one's actually mine. Jimmy helped me with it. So, the project that we're asking, we submitted through David Bowers to Michael was for a project we're doing on Highway 52 from Second Street to Prospect Church Road. We're gonna upgrade our entire system through that corridor, and several times we have to cross city streets along the state road, so that's basically what we submitted. We submitted all the designs and everything to Michael.
You're gonna be bored under all the city streets, but you also have some new lines you're wanting to put in.
Yes, sir.
And so, that's your primary request. You're filling us in on the other information, but you're requesting approval for the new lines, correct?
Yes, sir. That's correct.
Council, have any questions on the new lines? Do you have any on your agenda? Does council need to have it refreshed as to what locations? Please go ahead and tell us that, so the audience will know also. Hamilton Avenue...
Hamilton Avenue's one. Hamilton Avenue, the one, the road that runs behind the Burger King at the Northeast Connector is another one.
Linway and Rotary.
Linway Rotary.
Nowood.
Gilmore Street.
Not Nowood, Idowell, Ellis, Raleigh.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Right there.
Thank you, ma'am.
All of those. Counsel, have any problems with any of those?
No.
Not, I'll entertain a motion.
Under the road, right? They're born under.
Yes, ma'am.
At the intersection.
At the intersection, yes, ma'am. We're going under, we're going under all those.
All right, again, I entertain a motion. Counselmember Townsend? Second. Second, Counselmember Dry, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you, counsel.
See you soon.
That's a promise, isn't it?
Number seven, consider calling for a public hearing for proposed rezoning of a MAP amendment eighteen-zero-zero-one. Again, this is setting a public hearing, not actually discussing the project tonight.
Move a public hearing to be set for March fifth.
Motion by Counselmember Hall that it be set for March fifth. Second by Counselmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number eight, consider calling for a public hearing concerning the addition of hookah establishments to the zoning ordinance. This is a text amendment, eighteen-zero-zero-one.
Move approval to have the hearing, public hearing on March fifth.
Motion by Counselmember Hall for March fifth.
Second.
Second by Counselmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Number nine, is an update to council on the progress of removal of dilapidated homes for fiscal year seventeen, eighteen.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Let's up for you here real quick. So we use the same PowerPoint we had last time, so you'll be somewhat familiar with it. Just want to give you a quick update where we're at. We have, I think, fifteen or sixteen total houses we're looking at doing this year. So I'll kind of run through where we are with each one of those. First one, fifteen eighteen U.S. Highway fifty-two North, I think most of you know this one. This was taken just today. You can see that house is gone now. The owner has, has removed that one. So we're happy to have that one off the list now. Five thirty-one Ari Avenue as well as nine oh-six Elizabeth Avenue. I'm not sure what the deal with five thirty-one Ari is, but nine oh-six Elizabeth Avenue, there was a fire there recently or within the last couple of years, as you can see there. Both the property owners are trying to work with, with the fire department now to voluntarily have these removed. We are working with them to probably go ahead and have the asbestos assessment done on those. And so we're gonna, we're gonna try to get that done for them and speed that along, but we're hoping to have those done relatively soon, in the next, next couple of months. Eford Street is another one we've been in contact with the property owner as well about possibly burning this one or him demolishing it himself. We haven't come to any conclusion on what's gonna happen with that one yet, but we're hopeful that this one will be moving on along as well. I think we have a total of four property owners, I think, that, that own the rest of these properties here. This one is on eleven thirty-six Gibson Street as well as four twenty-eight Ari Avenue. These are both on one lot owned by Bobby Rory. Another one owned by Mr. Rory, that's six oh-eight Summit Avenue. And we have five thirteen Ari Avenue by the heirs of Ms. Parker. And there are actually three properties here, pretty much all in a row, that are in pretty bad shape. We also have one on four twenty-five East Oakwood Avenue. Fifteen-ten West Main Street, this is, this is two doors down from one that was removed just last year. We demolished that one. We also have eight oh-two Hill Street. This one's owned by Oscar Henson, Sonny Henson, as well as right next door to it there, eight oh-four Hill Street. And fourteen oh-four Pennington Road, which if everyone's familiar with this one, we did have on the list last year and it was, it was postponed. We are gonna try to get it done again this year.
Has he done anything other than?
I haven't, I haven't been out there in probably about a month, six weeks or so. I didn't see any new work done then. I haven't been out since then, but James will be talking to him about that, I'm hoping, in the next, next few weeks and we'll find out if.
When's the public hearing for?
Public hearing for that, and I'll get to that. We've got that, the public hearing for the demolition is gonna be April sixteenth. Where we're at right now is we've got asbestos assessment bids, actually went out today on those, and we're hoping that, that's gonna be back by mid-March. And so abatement if needed, we're gonna, we're gonna try to get all this lined up so that if, the abatement if it's needed, we can go ahead and take care of that first on the voluntary compliance properties, those first three or four that we, well, the first three that we saw there. We've got a remaining twelve homes after that that we'll have a, have a hearing with James coming up on March fourteenth. Following that, the demolition ordinance will be scheduled for April sixteenth. And abatement of asbestos on any of those that need it, as well as prep and removal will happen in late April. And then we will burn and demolish also late April through June, so April, May, and June. And then the burn season, sometimes they have to stagger those out. Just depends on, on when the fire department can get everything lined up with the state and with their other volunteer departments they bring in. But that can be extended into July and August. Our goal is to have everything done that's needed to be done budget-wise on those properties and have them ready to go for fire department.
Counsel, have any questions?
Two follow-ups. One that's not on here that I keep, actually I sent a text to, or sent an email to Christina today about.
Okay.
And then rather she was gone. It's the one that, you got it, on Park Ridge.
One-ten Park Ridge.
One-ten Park Ridge. I mean, I was asked about that twice over the weekend.
Yeah, I've got that, I've got that, that's actually one of three that I've given to James and Noster this quarter for them to look at and get an address as part of our deteriorated housing. I know it looks bad, but I don't think that house is quite a tear down yet.
No, it's not.
And so we'd like to get them to fix that roof there. That one's a challenge and the property owner's basically gone. I think they live in Florida or California, something like that. So we're, we're gonna try to see if we can get done with it, but.
It does look like, on the backside of the residence, it looks like it's an additional part of that's caved in now.
Yeah, it's, it's getting worse.
It's not getting any better.
It's getting worse, yeah. So we'll see what we can do with it. You know, the option is if we can't get in touch with them, I mean, what do we want to do? Do we want to go out and start fixing roofs as well as demolishing houses? We gotta really kind of decide exactly where we want to go with this, so.
And I guess one, one additional follow-through from our meeting, I don't know if it was the fifth or the seventh of February, and we were talking about moving forward for fiscal year eighteen-nineteen. Has, and I'll ask you this and Mr. Ferris at the same time, has contact been made with COG just as a follow-through with that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we did follow up and we're waiting to get an estimate back on that as well.
Thank you very much.
Further questions?
Nice presentation. Someone, the pictures, the address, it's, it's very well laid out and it's easy to see what we're doing. So thank you for.
Absolutely.
Good job.
Thank you, Ms. Robinson. Let's move on to number ten, consider agreement with Stanley County in the abandoned mobile home program.
Okay, thank you. That really kind of rolls nicely into this. The, I don't know if it pulls up for me there. This, this is pretty simple. This is just another tool that we'd like to add to our toolbox when it comes to dealing with some of our distressed properties in the city. This is a program that Stanley County currently works with the state on. I believe they get state funding and that's through, there is a fund on mobile homes for disposal and removal of mobile homes that everyone has to pay, kind of like you pay on your tires, when you buy tires. So the state distributes this to counties as they request it. And I think the county's been doing this for about seven years now. They got over a hundred, over a hundred mobile homes that they've removed. And I think they're doing it with, I think they're doing it with five or six of the other municipalities. So we were trying to kind of get added to that mix. And what we'd like to do is, what I prefer is a motion from y'all tonight to allow staff and our administration to enter into this interlocal contract with them, this interlocal agreement. And this doesn't lock us into doing anything. All it does is kind of open the door for us to work on this program with them on an annual basis. We would essentially give them a list of manufactured homes that need to be removed. They will apply for state funding on that. And we have essentially what we are on, we have a two hundred dollar administrative fee that we will pay to Stanley County for their, their work on that end. And then there's also a three hundred dollar, three hundred and fifty dollar tipping fee as well. That can come from the property owner, it can come from us. If we were doing this as part of minimum housing, that could be recouped through a lien as well. So again, this is just a, this would be another tool to help us with the demolition and the removal program that we've got right now. We're not really doing many of these manufactured homes, but we have several of them that really need to go and this would help us to address that.
Counsel, have any questions?
Would this be administered through James Luster with, with COG or we do it internally?
Yeah, what would happen would be we would take these through the, the minimum housing process, the same as everything else, except when we come down to the end, instead of us actually going out and getting bids on demolition or working with the fire department on to burn them, we would just essentially get ordinance, we would go ahead and hand this over to county and they would deal with everything else on their end.
Move we.
This saves about probably between five hundred to seven hundred dollars per manufactured house, so.
Move we allow staff to enter to the agreement with the county of Stanley for the removal of the abandoned mobile homes.
Motion by Counselmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Counselmember Whitley, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Number eleven, presentation of the twenty-seventeen annual report for the police department.
Given to Mayor, members of council, Ms. Ferris, you should have your copy of the twenty-seventeen annual report from our department. There's a lot of information in there. Just a few highlights, we did experience an increase in calls this past year. While it was very small, only a four percent increase. It's the first year in, I think, five years that we've had an increase. In the past five years, we've been seeing decreases each year and this year we had a slight increase. We answered nineteen thousand two hundred and twenty-one calls for service during the year. Averages out somewhere around fifty-five, sixty calls per day. Each department has a section in here where they explain what they did, what they plan to do this coming year, things they're looking forward to. And you'll notice on the front of the book, we have our current building. Hopefully next year we'll have a different picture there. As you go through it, if you, if you see any thing that you have any comments or questions on, please let me know. One thing that you may look at when you see the statistics from last year, we did have a huge increase in the number of involuntary commitment papers that we serve. Trying to get to that page. This past year we served four hundred and seventy-seven. Normally we serve less than a hundred.
Can you?
Explain to them why.
And can you, that's right.
I will try.
Explain what that is.
Well, now it's atrium, last, it's the new, the new hospital. Anytime anyone in our service area in Stanley County, even in some of the surrounding counties has the need for a involuntary commitment paper to be served, they come to our local hospital. Since it's our local hospital, we end up serving the paper. So it's, it's increased the amount of papers that we serve greatly. However, since the hospital does have their own law enforcement security, we've cut down on the amount of time that we spend with each commitment, we just have to serve the papers now. Does that answer your question?
For years, when we had a commitment, we would take them to a local hospital and they would go somewhere else. Well, it's in reverse now. Everything's coming to our hospital.
As the intake, as the intake.
So when you say commitment, is that for drug treatment or?
That's a mental health assessment. And it, the paper is issued by a magistrate. It gives us the authority to take them into custody and take them to the hospital where they're evaluated by a doctor or mental health professional, and then they decide where they go from there. But we're the inpatient facility now where, like the mayor said, in the past, we would, they would be evaluated here, we would send them somewhere else. Now we're the location where they send them. So we have a large increase in that number of types of calls.
And is it because, Chief, the hospital is within the city of Albemarle?
Correct.
And that is the reason that you may be serving folks who are not from here?
And that's correct. We do serve a lot of those papers that are on individuals that do not live in, even in Stanley County.
Because of the facility?
Correct.
And what the services the facility has.
Chief, I know there will be some, some variance on it, but I can remember back, you know, before the hospital had their own security folks, that it would take, you know, it could take three, four, five hours on a commitment that our officers were getting tied up. So on average now, since they do have their own security at the hospital, can you speak to the, you know, if there is an average as far as a commitment?
As far as an average, I would probably say somewhere around thirty, forty-five minutes. Our officer has to go down to the magistrate's office, pick up the paperwork, deliver it to the hospital, serve it on the person, fill out the paperwork, let the doctor sign it, and then we return it. There are some exceptions to that when we may have to go and physically transport somebody, pick them up somewhere and take them to the hospital. That may take a little longer, but overall I would average about forty-five minutes now, which is a, a great change from back, you're correct, three, four, even longer time to sit in the hospital.
Further question?
Yeah, just one other comment.
Sure.
Because we've got students here and because we've got parents and we've got folks that will be watching the students, will you give an overview of the drug, the drug drop box that we have in our facility or in your facility?
Of course.
And talk about why, who, how, that kind of.
Okay, we do have a, as Counselmember Hall said, a drug drop box in our lobby. Our lobby's open twenty-four hours a day. We're always open. If you have old medication, medication someone's not using, or drugs you need to get rid of, put them in a bag, bring them, it's a, it looks like an old mailbox. It's right inside the front door, come inside, drop them in and walk out. Nobody's, nobody takes anybody's name or anything. It's just a way to dispose of them. We in turn take those and incinerate them and dispose of them. It will, the good part about that program is that it gets drugs that, out of your house that nobody's using and that way it's not available for somebody to experiment with or, you know, hurt theirself with, so.
Further questions? Thank you, sir.
We're gonna test on this tomorrow.
Yeah, we are. Number twelve is information the city has been awarded in NC Department of Transportation Bicycle Helmet Grant for the Parks and Recreation. Do you want to say anything, Lisa, or your information's in the agenda? Counsel, have any questions on?
Good job.
Good job, yeah.
Thank you. Reminder that we have the county COG meeting at next Tuesday night in Meisenheimer, not tomorrow night, next week, February twenty-seventh. Also reminder, Chamber of Commerce annual meeting next Wednesday, not this week, next week, February twenty-eighth. Coming around, Ms. Ferris.
Two quick items. The first item, if council would please consider the ordinance that is in place at the desk tonight, just didn't get it in time for the agenda, but do want to move on the ordinance because it involves replacement of police department vehicle. There's a pretty long lead time to order a vehicle and get it here within the fiscal year. What we're asking for is to appropriate insurance proceeds that we've received back in from vehicles that have either been involved in accidents or that were, have been damaged through other incidents, the shooting. The cars were heavily damaged a couple of months ago, around the first of the year. One of those cars was totaled and there's some other damage. So we'd like to take basically the insurance proceeds from vehicles that are no longer in service and purchase a new one to replace. And so that would take a budget amendment to appropriate the proceeds.
Counsel was advised of this during our budget work session, so if you have any questions.
Move approve ordinance eighteen-dash unknown to appropriate insurance proceeds to purchase police vehicle.
Motion by Counselmember Hall.
Second.
Second by Counselmember Hughes, further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Those opposed, motion carries. Ms. Ferris?
And the second item is the employee appreciation event that council, that we talked about again at one of our budget work sessions.
again at one of our bunch of work sessions. We've settled on a date, Friday, March 2nd, from 7:00 to 8:00 at the warehouse.
2:00.
AM. Want to get you there before the employees.
7:00. Is that what you're saying?
2:00, 2:00, 2:00, I'm sorry. March 2nd, 7:00 to 8:00 in the morning, so we want to catch the employees before they get outdoor.
Okay. Anything further?
That's it.
Mr. Counsel?
Just a reminder to council about the ribbon cutting ceremony for the EYL Center Gymnasium this Friday. What, what time, Lisa?
11:30.
11:30, all right. That's it.
Ms. Hughes.
Yes, sir.
Ms. Brown?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Hall?
Wine Festival, ADDC's Wine Festival's this Saturday. Tickets are a little bit less expensive ahead of time. I, I made a call today about, just to find out what was going on with Beach Blast, because we've really not heard anything from ADDC as a whole. And it's still on, and they're working with Parks and Rec about doing some kind of basketball tournament, basketball, something between the time the race is over and the music starts in the middle of the afternoon. And last thing, I know that Chief's been working on this book that we have, but I, again, am looking forward to panhandling update and information that you might be able to find. I don't mind telling you, I make phone calls on a regular basis when I see folks out. I know that they cannot do it, that if they're in the middle of the road and if they're impeding traffic, that's when we can do something about it. But I, again, have had folks say to me, we have too many nonprofit agencies in this county who will help take care of folks if they are in need. They don't need to be standing on the sidewalk or coming up to folks' cars at different intersections. So I look forward to that, Chief. Thank you. That's it.
Mr. Dry?
Yes. I'd just like to congratulate my co-host over here for jumping on the cover of Southern City. And Martha Sue does a great deal of work for not only the city of Albemarle, but across, across the board with COG, and I think it's a great honor. It was a nice article to read, and a beautiful picture on the front. Congratulations.
Thanks, man.
Eddie? Ms. Whitley?
I'm good.
Mr. Brantman?
Yep.
Anyone in the audience have anything to come before counsel? Again, thank you to all the students and to the middle school for allowing us to be a part of the Youth and Government Day. We appreciate it, look forward to having you back for any other reason, and maybe one day you'll want to be employee of the city, or you might want to be sitting here where we're sitting. Thank you very much. Counsel, I'll entertain a motion that would go into executive session for, discuss the City of Albemarle versus Chucky Elnance, 143, 318, 113, and A3 for attorney consultation.